We'll be just talking about seconds.
Yeah, you know her too.
Good? Okay, welcome to the city council regular meeting. It's Tuesday, the sep- uh, second of September. Glad to have you here tonight. There's not too many others. They've already left the first meeting, so. Glad to have you and all the rest. So, uh, we'll dispense with roll call. Everyone is here, all the council ready to go, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance and Travis Keel will get us started. Please repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Jeff Sitaway will, uh, share a thought with us tonight, I guess.
Yeah, I saw this a couple of weeks back, right when we were finalizing the budget and the tax rate and everything. It just says, even if you're on the right track, if you stop moving, the train will still hit you. So, we can think that we're doing the right thing. We think that we're on the right, on the right track, but unless we move with the changes in the times, changes in the city, it's still just gonna hit us. And it kinda goes with the, uh, impact fees discussion we had earlier. If we're not keeping up with inflation, it's still gonna roll us over. So I just thought that was a funny little thing that actually applies to us.
Wise counsel. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, does any- anyone need to declare any potential conflict of interest for tonight? Anything on the agenda? It's a light agenda, so, uh, we're ready to move. Like to go into the consent agenda. First, the minutes of the nineteenth, August nineteenth. Had a chance to look at them. Fairly concise. Looks like everything that we did. I didn't see anything to change. We good? Move on to the review of the expenditures. Did you guys get a chance to look at the two million fifty-four thousand ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents? It's, uh, gives you a chance to see how things are being expended. Any questions, changes, anything we need to look at? Okay, um, out of state training. And there was a question that came up on the out of state training last, last time, and we, we had a special meeting, just wanted to make sure that we've got things understood all the way through, and, uh, would you like to address that, Norm?
Sure. So Mayor and Council, the out of state training request is for Jason and myself to attend the International City Managers Association Conference in Tampa, Florida in October. Uh, we did talk about the, the item that was labeled per DM last time for myself. Um, recognizing that that's not just money that's coming to me. That is reimbursement for airline tickets, lodging, food, et cetera, that goes along with that. So that, that's why that seemed a little bit high. Um, it, it was not just a normal, what you would normally see as per DM as far as meals are concerned. That was for the entire trip.
Yeah, if there's ever any questions like that, bring them up. I'd love to talk with it and make sure that we've got all the explanations. Just don't want anything brushed under the rug.
Yeah, this out of state training is for Jason and I for our professional development, um, as indicated in our, in the, in the budget and in our employment agreements to help us to do the best we can to manage the city. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm gonna.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved in second to Brian.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Lynn.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
We can move on to the public forum bid openings, awards, and appointments, and the first thing is El Poncho. So, Brian?
Yeah, do you want me to read it from here?
Yeah.
I had a little, I don't know if you saw, you were featured in the city newsletter that went out to everyone in the city. I'm a little biased. Uh, I love El Poncho. Uh, I've, I think I've gone multiple times a day. That's how bad it is. During one of the hometown markets, I went there for lunch, and I didn't just get one burrito. I got like three burritos. And then at the hometown market, then I think I got another burrito and a quesadilla. Um, it's, I love the food. And, uh, Rose and Luis are amazing. Um, so I'm gonna read this, just as a little highlight, um, for everybody. Uh, Rose and Luis Barretto are the owners of El Poncho Mexican Food, which is currently a food truck located on two ninety East Main, but also found at many city events such as Orchard Days and our hometown markets. For Rose and Luis Barretto, it isn't just a business, it's a way of life. Luis grew up in the restaurant world, learning the craft from his parents, who owned a restaurant in Mexico. With more than twenty years of professional experience, he has been cooking authentic Mexican food his entire life. When he and Rose moved to Utah from Seattle during the pandemic, they noticed something missing, which was authentic Mexican flavors like the ones Luis grew up with. That gap sparked the idea to bring their own tradition of cooking to the community. Their first step was a taco trek, an affordable way to start sharing their food while dreaming of someday opening a full restaurant in Santaquin. In April twenty twenty-two, they began serving the community from the corner of one hundred East and Main Street, and in May twenty twenty-four, they purchased the property on two ninety East Main to grow their business even further. Today, their menu includes breakfast, lunch, and dinner with hours posted on social media and even the option to order through DoorDash. Rose, who grew up near, in nearby Genoa, says choosing Santaquin felt natural. Everybody knows everybody here, she shares, describing the hometown feel and friendly, neighborly spirit that welcomed them right away. The Barrettos love that Santaquin has been so supportive of their journey, helping them turn a food truck dream into a permanent part of the community. After just one year of living in Santaquin, they previously lived in Genoa, so basically Santaquin, um, they already feel at home and plan on staying for years to come. Looking ahead, Rose and Luis are excited about their future in Santaquin. They hope to continue growing their business and one day open a restaurant at that property their food truck is currently located at, where friends and family can gather. Until then, you'll find their food truck serving out the same authentic meals that have already made them a local favorite. Uh, I do wanna say, uh, hopefully I got everything right, cuz we were talking, um, they are, when people love Santaquin and they love this hometown feel, that's who they are. And I think we talked about that they've benefited from people that have supported them and helped them, but I also see that from them. Um, and it's so great. I, it's so great having your business here and having you guys here. And I was beyond joyed. I think I even asked like, can I tour this house that you just bought? Cuz I was so excited that you were opening up a permanent place. Um, because I didn't want you to go anywhere else, and I know so many others, uh, don't, um, and, and love, uh, the food and, and what you do to contribute to the community. So congratulations and thank you for, uh, being in Santaquin.
We have, we do have something that we wanna give you guys, but, uh, I wanted to say, after, after talking with Brian a couple of weeks ago, I went over and got breakfast. I was filling up with gas at the Holiday, and I'm looking across the street and you're there and getting ready to cook, and I went, I need to taste one of these, these steak burritos. You don't taste a steak burrito for breakfast. That, it is, it is breakfast. And that was the best burrito. I've gotta tell you, that was really, really good. I'm glad I took the time and only been there a couple of other times. I'll make it a better stop, but, uh, thank you. Thank you for being part of the city too. But we wanna get a picture. Brian, you have to stand in there. You can't get out.
Should work.
What do you wanna see?
Everybody.
Go up here in the front.
Oh, they're excited.
Can you see your face?
Can you hold these?
Will you hold them for your proposal?
Don't drop it.
All right, you ready? Okay, one, two, three. Gotta work.
What happened?
Richard.
Ace. You know, Richard is a.
Wondering when he comes in all these pictures he takes.
Facebook.
I, I do wanna add before they go, um, we were talking and I, um, I asked about Main Street construction, and Rose mentioned it's actually been great for them, you know, and I do wanna say, if anyone's wondering how the Main Street construction is going so fast, it's because everyone that's working on it has been fueled by their food, you know, so, um, it's, it's, uh, it's great to, to have that.
I did tell him, I was like, I think we are the only ones not complaining about Main Street.
Yeah.
That's good. That is so good. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We are so glad you're here, and we wish you many, many good years of great successes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, public forum. Do we have a public forum tonight?
I don't think anyone signed up.
I'm not sure we had anything anyone wanted to speak about.
Nobody here to sign up.
Is it empty? Perfect. Okay, uh, let's just move straight into the building permits and the business license report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, uh, Norm's got it up on the screen. You can see calendar year today. We're up to a hundred and ninety-nine residential dwelling units. This time last calendar year, we were up to a hundred and eighty-two, so we are a little bit ahead of pace. Uh, end of, of last calendar year, we were totaled out at two hundred and sixty-eight, so we're approaching the total that we had last year. Uh, fiscal year, uh, which we're still new into the fiscal year, we're up to thirty-nine, just a little bit ahead of pace of where we were this time last fiscal year. And you can see the, the total for last fiscal year was two hundred and eighty. Uh, and of course, there's always the breakdown of what those residential dwelling units are. For new business licenses, we have two, a home occupation for, for an electrician, and a new commercial business license for the Les Schwab, which is there, uh, just east of the, the Quik Quack, so.
Did they say when they were gonna open?
I have a report on that.
Oh, well, then I won't bother you.
You don't wanna steal Norm's thunder, so.
There was a lot of activity there this morning.
Jason, I have a question about building permits. If a subdivider comes in and it's not like there's gonna be like a hundred and twenty-two homes down in the north of me, is that one building permit or is that a hundred and twenty-two?
A hundred and twenty-two.
So it's, so it's a hundred and twenty-two separate homes. So we, we don't count that until they actually build. So, so in the.
But it's a permit for each house?
So it's an actual building permit, not just a, an approved lot. So if you remember at the budget retreat, I'll give you more of a comprehensive, like, statistics for community development. That'll break it down a little bit more into, like, lots that have been approved and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay.
This is just building permits. This is for people that are pulling a permit to actually build.
It's just a general question. Thanks.
Okay. Um, reports. We just, this is gonna be a quick meeting.
Okay, back to me.
Just wait for all my questions. I'm not asking any questions, by the way. I've already told Art.
He turned your microphone off.
Here, have a little.
Touche.
So just, just an update on things that are coming up on upcoming meetings. Uh, next council meeting, uh, you can expect that we'll have a general, a proposed general plan amendment. This is related to the proposed RV resort area. Um, it's, it's really, we're trying to look at the, the kinda northeast quadrant of the city and, and with that proposal, and, and with some of the regional planning information that we have, we're trying to, to make sure that our, our general plan actually reflects what, what plans are for up in that future, but really, it's, it's, it's kind of, you know, bringing it to light because of the proposed RV resort. So, uh, that'll be on the next city council meeting. Um, and we're continuing to work with the Fields family and, and help them understand the process. Uh, for DRC, we do have a preliminary plan for the Apple Grove Apartments. This is the apartment buildings that have always been in the master plan in the, uh, Orchards Development on the very north side of town, uh, up close to the, the water reclamation facility and Public Works Building. Um, so it's one of the last phases of that Orchard's development. Uh, it's those, there's gonna be five separate buildings for apartments, kind of there in, in the center of the townhomes that are on the east side of Center Street. Uh, we also may have a couple of traffic device requests. Um, and then for Planning Commission, uh, like I mentioned in the work session, we have the public hearing for the general plan amendment. Uh, this is, uh, separate from, from the, the one I mentioned, uh, related to the RV resort, but this is for the water element. Uh, this is a requirement that the state has, has given for cities to, to provide a water element in their general plan. Luckily, we were able to get a grant that, that paid for, for this update, so, uh, yeah, it's, it's actually also Hanson Allen Loos that helped us with this, and we'll have that before you for your consideration. Uh, for now, that's, uh, those are the, the pending things that we have on upcoming meetings, and, um, I think aside from that, uh, I don't think I have anything else to report today.
Okay, Norm?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so a couple of things. Uh, UDOT is going to be working on I fifteen, the I fifteen Bridge in Mona, the northbound lane of the I fifteen Bridge that's on twenty-three hundred north or Canyon Road. Also, if you're, if, if you orient yourself, that's where the gravel pit is up there, the large Kilgore gravel pit is up there. The, the, they found that the bridge has been hit. It's still structurally sound, but they're gonna be doing some repairs from September to November. There will be lane closures on that on non-peak times that will likely affect some traffic in Santaquin whenever they close that. I don't have any more information. It's starting in a couple of weeks and we'll go through November. Uh, but as that gets updated, you'll be able to see updates that we get from them on our, uh, social media and website, so you'll be able to kinda keep up to date on that. Like, again, northbound lane closures. I don't anticipate anything southbound, just northbound, and if that causes delays, then people are gonna jump off the freeway and come up the Furnace Road. Um, that is a project they're doing, has nothing to do with us, other than we would likely be affected by some traffic. Uh, also wanted to let you know, there was some common conversation last two weeks ago about the, the, uh, State Senate Bill eighty, which is a water rate user fee. The state is, is in the middle of implementing a, a water user fee for water users of municipalities for drinking water. Um, we, we talked about it a little bit last time. Um, if we would have paid this fee in twenty twenty-four, the entirety for the city would have been about thirteen thousand dollars. It will be probably a little bit more than that during the twenty-seven year that we have to pay it. The State, uh, uh, Division of Drinking Water or Department of Division of Water Resources, I can't remember which one, is going through public process right now to hear comments. It will end up being a, a fee of about three point one or three point three cents per thousand gallons on each one of our thousands of gallons worth of use. That's where the thirteen thousand would have come up a couple of years ago. Just on drinking water, the, the intent of this, my understanding is the intent of this, uh, uh, bill, Senate Bill eighty that was passed this January, is to help fund water projects in the city, in the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions as I can on that. That's as much information as I know. We're opposed to it, but it is legislation, and it will be coming. The, the fee will be based on water, culinary water usage per calendar year paid the following July, so it will start in twenty twenty-six calendar year and be, we will have to pay it in July of twenty twenty-seven. So not sure how we're going to do that. I would recommend that we look at all options, whether then that's just an extra fee that's put on our user rates when we, when we have that for the, for the state. Otherwise, we absorb that thirteen plus thousand dollars annually, and it will continue to grow as water use continues to grow. That's the information I have about that. Um, Main Street project we've talked about is going along well. They've indicated that they're, they're probably within the next thirty to sixty days wrapping everything up from concrete to driveway approaches to, to tiebacks, to landscaping, to stamped colored concrete, to streetlights. The streetlights are going up now. They're not gonna be wired for a minute. That'll be in the next couple of weeks, but the, the project is moving along quite well, and, and they will be done this construction season. Sure.
Does that include what they're doing on Center Street by the post office? Is that part of that?
It does. That's correct. Yep. That is part of the, the project. It was unfortunate that we were not able to get an easement from the post office, so we had to go around. And that's the reason why that work didn't get done the first time around is because we were still trying to negotiate with the post office, and that ended up failing, so here we are. But yes, that is part of the Main Street drainage on the drains, drainage, or sorry, on the Main Street project, and that will be done. Uh, they, they actually plan on paving most of the tiebacks starting next week on the parking lots, side roads, et cetera, starting next week. Um, CUP project, I mentioned to you last time that, uh, a week from Friday on, on September tenth, sorry, a week from Wednesday on September tenth, we have a, uh, CUP, Central Utah Water Conservancy District has, has rented out our, our room on the south end of the building here in City Hall, the multipurpose room. They're gonna have a, a celebratory laying of the last pipe. They'll have a lunch and a program here, and the laying of the last pipe will take place over by Highway one ninety-eight. I think I've gotten responses back from most of the council. If you haven't responded back to me, let me know, and we'll plan on having a lunch plate for you there, and, and you can be a part of that. And I think that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Les Schwab.
Oh, sorry, yes, Les Schwab, thank you. Um, Les Schwab is having a soft opening tomorrow.
That's what I thought.
And a tentative, um, ribbon cutting grand opening on the nineteenth. I still need to confirm that with the chamber, but that was the word that I had from the chamber just last week, is that they're planning on the nineteenth for a grand opening ribbon cutting celebration, but tomorrow is a soft opening.
And Murdochs is October sixteenth or something like.
I believe that's correct, yes. Yep. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Anything else?
Chip.
Okay, Travis?
Uh, my hometown is gonna kick off next week.
Monday.
YCC is gonna be there to serve hot dogs. So we're gonna do our.
Who is?
Youth City Council.
Oh, good.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Lynn?
Nothing for me.
Jeff?
Nothing to report, but a question just came to my mind. If, you know, one single apartment building has sixty units, how many permits is that?
So we, in that, that table that's there, we have, uh, a single family.
Yep, multifamily and commercial.
And then we have multifamily, so we would count those as, as each separate unit. So on, on the form, it says residential dwelling unit, so we couch, count each dwelling unit.
So that would be sixty.
Apartment is.
That would be sixty doors.
Cuz they usually do them all at once.
Sometimes the permit will be one permit for like.
A building.
Ten, ten units.
Okay.
But for purposes of reporting it to you, we make sure you know each individual unit.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious cuz it came up.
Yeah.
So sixty units, five buildings, there's twelve per, it's one building permit.
Yeah.
Because they built the building altogether, but it's one, it's, it's twelve doors or dwelling units on the report that we provide to you.
All right, that's all I got.
Yep.
Okay, Art?
I'm gonna hit my hometown again. Um, it's Monday, the, uh, the eighth of September from six to eight P M. It's a grand opening for that program. There'll be food, there'll be a mechanical ball, uh, there'll be inflatables for the kids, so.
Should be a lot there.
Bring your friendly chiropractor and try out the mechanical ball. Um, uh, just a way of observation, I'm a, a date person, I suppose. Next week is the second anniversary of the dedication of this building. Or two years ago, anyway. And the last thing, last city council meeting, I made, um, some inquiries about the extensive amount of bills that were spent for our Orchard Day celebration. In a generous meeting with the staff, they, uh, helped me understand that we are reimbursed in either way, with sponsorships or other means of probably half of that money. And so, uh, between that reimbursement and then the, the good that it does for the community as far as gathering us all together and making us, uh, I wanna big happy family kinda thing. It's just good for us to get together, rub shoulders socially, and, and so, um, if there was any misunderstanding about my support of that, please forgive me. Um, I think it's a great, great opportunity for us to get together as a community. Thank you.
Okay. Brian?
I don't have anything to report.
Whoa.
No questions either.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit, just hit a, a couple of things. Uh, the industrial park asphalt is pretty much finished. They've got a little bit of concrete ADA tie-ins. Other than that, we're all up and running. It looks like they're about ready to do the pop-up tilt-ups for the, uh,
Lot number one.
John Jensen place. Uh, where do we stand with the rest of the, we, we should have three or four of those other businesses. We're getting very, well, and, and Green Hall's already building, so.
Right. Yeah, we have, uh, three or four site plan approvals that are either done or in process, and if the site plans are done and approved, then the building permits are in process. So yeah, we're, we're moving forward on at least three of those that I can think of. There might be a fourth that I'm not, that I'm not privy to where it's exactly at in the plan.
Yeah, more to come.
Yes, more to come.
More to come. Um, phase one on UDOT on the two fifteen, or the I fifteen, uh, interchange project. We had a meeting last Thursday, the, uh, Jason, Norm and I, and, uh, we spent some time with the engineers from, um, Region Three, and, uh, we're able to just say, okay, this is one of the ways in which we would like to approach this right now, or trying to see if there's a way that we can utilize the money that's been left over and awarded to us to this point to be able to do a phase one approach and put some effort into the tie-in roads, uh, one ninety-eight and Highland, and move the light up and get some of that traffic pattern changed and get it working so that we're not ripping up abs- absolutely everything in a short amount of time, whatever that is for when they do the construction on the interstate as well as the interchange. So, uh.
Mostly focused on the southeast quadrant of the intersection. If you think about that south and around Big O and that five acre parcel Am Source subdivision, those are a little bit more ripe and other things that could be coming along. That's what we're trying to focus on initially, to be able to, to open some of that area up and get roads built, change of traffic patterns, et cetera. So it was a really good meeting last week.
And, and really good meetings on, uh, some commercial too, that's, that's working it coming this way, and, uh, I think we've made some pretty good headway. We're not, not ready to announce too many things, so, uh, I, it looks good. So I'm excited about those. Um, we had a, a good visit last Thursday. Burgess Owens was here. We had the best driver you could imagine.
He's okay.
Agreed. It's just, his humility is out there, but we were able to take his whole staff, not only from Utah, but from Washington. They were here for a a summer party to get together, the whole group of them. There were eighteen of them. And, uh, we took them up the canyon, uh, Travis chauffeuring, Jason and I talking the whole time. They just gave us, uh, permission to do the tour. And we toured up and toured back, and even, uh, Travis learned something about the canyon, so, uh, it was a good trip.
I learned a lot.
Very well. Uh, it's, it's fun to know that we have a congressman that really cares about Santaquin and, and, uh, it was, it was a good experience. So I did wanna thank you especially um, for the work that we've been able to get in and, and, uh, it makes a lot of difference because as, as you get near the end, he says, how is the, how is the property transfer happening? How, what can we do? Where do we stand? And I, I wanted to tell you that, uh, there's two things that we've accomplished in the last few weeks. We, we were able to hand in, uh, all of the asks for definitions and proposals for the, the swapping of the upper forty down closer contiguous to our other eighty acres and make it all one park. And so far it's moving along, we were able to hand in the, the appraised values and everything else, so, uh, they've got it all in their hands. I haven't had any feedback. I, I was hoping there would be something, and I'll probably be in touch with the district ranger over that sometime soon. The other thing was, um, engineering, uh, two weeks ago, we're, was able to finish up the, the, uh, engineering calcs and, and the drawings for the new bridge on Turkey Run down by the lower parking lot. And those have all been handed to the, uh, Forest Service. So what he had told me, the district ranger was, as soon as we can get an approval on this, we should be able to move forward. That would just be, uh, addition to the NPO we already have for the ability to ride on that, that existing trail, which we call the Turkey Run. That ties it all in. We can run over the, over the stream with, uh, bicycles and locking all spring long if there's high water going down through, and it, it'll be a whole lot nicer. all spring long if there's high water going down through and it, it'll be a whole lot nicer because they've encouraged too that we, we do ADA across there. And I think that's a real good thing because now we have two bridges and all kinds of things that, uh, we can get to even with folks on any kind of ADA, uh, machinery that they may have in there. So that looks really good. Um, that's pretty much most of it, we'll keep working on the phase one approach to try to get those swaps going. I don't think there's anything else I needed to hit, other than as we bring this particular meeting to a close, we'll actually, uh, just, um, excuse ourselves from this meeting and go into an executive meeting for, uh, pending a reasonable imminent, imminent litigation, collective bargaining, purchase, exchange, lease or real property, a proposed development agreement, uh, per, project proposal or financing proposal related to development of land owned by the state. Um, so with that, I would like to have a motion to, uh, recess from this meeting. After our executive meeting, we will come back in, uh, later tonight and close this meeting out and, uh, whatever time that will be, so I would ask for a motion to recess from here.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Thank you for attending tonight, congratulations on being our people that we selected for your wonderful business, thank you.